We won't start until we all stand up, but we open a meeting with a pledge to the flag. And so it looks like it's seven o'clock. We'll do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. This is our regular board meeting, the second Monday of the month, and we have a short board tonight, but we can still conduct business because we do have a quorum. Two of our members are off traveling to parts outside of Red Hook, but the village continues and the meetings must go on, so as long as we have a quorum, we can do that. What I thought we'd do is we have a certain routine, and I see some new faces in the audience. We'll do some minutes approval in a few early parts of our meeting, but if the board concurs, we could hear what you folks need and want to say, and then we can move on, because our meeting is more of a business meeting tonight, and you might not want to stay for the whole thing. Public comment is usually on the-
They might want to.
Yeah, you could. You're welcome to. But public comment is generally at the end. But what we try to do is if there's folks that have a message to convey, we could get you in, get you heard, and then if you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome. Some of us, you know, George is one of our regular attendees, he'll stay the whole time, but it's a good meeting and it's fun, but anyway. That being said, I thought first, let's just look at the minutes from the last few meetings we've worked on. They're in your, they've been circulated and pushed around, but the last regular monthly meeting was May 13th, then we had that special meeting, May 16th, and then Cindy pushed through the June 6th, part two of the public hearing on the community solar project, so we'd have that kind of buttoned up for this meeting tonight. So we have May 13, May 16, and June 6. I reviewed them, made some alterations and edits. I would ask, does anybody else have any other additions, alterations, or corrections?
I just had a couple change on the name.
Name of?
Jess Huestead should be Tessa Huestead.
A person's name?
Right, under public comment.
Okay, so her first name was not what we have?
Right. Tessa, T-E-S-S-A?
Or SS?
And under Laurie Huestead, she spells it L-A-U-R-I-E. But no, it was fine.
So those two corrections would be added?
Cut.
Thank you.
All in favor?
We seconded it.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. So like I said, we can bump our routine around a little bit and switch to public comment. What we do, since we are on Panda, this mic helps you get heard to the other audience, that's why we use it, so we would hand that to you, but before, does somebody want to say something that way here, I assume? Do you want to? Or not? I might be presuming something that's not correct, but, okay. George knows the drill here. If you do have something, just say who you are, where your property is, and what you need.
My name is Steve Hobson. I own a property 51 Elizabeth Street, Hobson Window, across from the Chalka Factory, Jason Diagway. I'm here on behalf of some zoning questions and issues I've had brought up. I've currently got the building for sale. I think maybe the board is aware that I've done a new project here, a new building right here on South Broadway, and I'd like to proceed with the sale of the building, and I'm currently zoned R-10,000. So when I purchased it back in 2012, I assumed my business there, resumed doing business for what was there, anyway, for many years. It was a commercial building, and now I'd like to, I'd like to sell it, and I'd like to keep the usage, and I'd like to ensure that any, anybody purchasing it can continue to do business as such. And I would also like to approach the board with a request to consider to change the zoning, to make it mixed.
Okay, we could take your comment right now. It's something we haven't been actively thinking about right there, but it sounds like, are you still occupying it somehow to keep the use alive and active right now?
I am, yeah. I took some deliveries there today. I've got equipment stored there. I've got trucks there. I'm not staffing it every single day, because I'm staffing the other building, but yes, it's-
Serving your business and-
It's still servicing the business for now, yes.
It's got a six-month time, you know, when it's abandoned or not being used, well, it still can conform to, it's a non-conforming use, so it's six months until the time that it's empty, that you would have to send it.
Okay, I was under the impression that it was a year from the time.
Yeah, that's been changed recently to six months.
Okay.
So that's 54 Elizabeth Street?
Is it Elizabeth?
Fifty-one, fifty-four.
Fifty-one, yes.
Because you're right on the border of the neighborhood mixed-use zone.
I am, and everything, everything on the other side of the road and going out to Route Nine is industrial, and-
It's neighborhood mixed-use now, so there's no more industrial zones, so.
That, yes.
Yeah.
So that, that section is, and I'm sure that any potential buyer, any potential buyer's going to buy it for a somewhat, some sort of a commercial use. It's, it has been my lifetime, and I did buy it knowing that it was a glass shop before, and it had a separate rental in there as well when I, when I purchased it, which I kept for a couple of years, and then I kind of absorbed that, because I needed space, and I outgrew the space, and I made a lot of improvements to the building, including the, the whole solar system, which I purchased, and I, you know, I made it look good, and to turn it back to a residential property now would, would cost me, it'd be insurmountable to make it profitable.
And you do want to sell, is what you're saying? Like, do you want to?
I do. I do, I do, because it's just not going to tie in with my, my, my new building, so.
We could give somebody else the mic, or are you all here together, or same issue?
My name is Lisa Griffin. I'm here with my husband Dennis. We're about in the same boat. We have a property, Griff's South Side Deli, 7361 South Broadway, and we're one of, I believe, three properties that are not mixed-use. We're like in the middle or the end of a district that is not, and we're excluded from the mixed-use. We've had the property for about 14, 15 years, and we're getting old, and we're thinking of retiring, and we've had a couple of offers on the building, but they wanted to change the use somewhat. One person wanted to do an office in the front and another apartment in the back, but of course, the way it is zoned now, we, we can't do that. I mean, it's, has to be another deli, or we can't sell it. So we potentially lost two buyers because of the zoning, and we're just asking for some consideration in changing, being we're the end of that mixed-use property. So that's about it.
Similar situation.
Similar situation, yeah.
Are you, are you in the, your new building, is that in the NMU zone, or you in a residential zone? Do you know?
It's NMU.
You're in NMU?
Correct.
So just the three properties on the west side of South Broadway, right?
I think it's four properties.
Four properties?
I'm, I'm actually at the end.
You're at the end.
Yeah, I'm at the end, then it's you, and-
Up to, yeah.
George, you have the map, right?
There's three residences, three houses between the deli and the archery.
Yeah, I think there's three, yeah.
And then across the street, it's all NMU, and everything else on south from us, from the four properties, is NMU. And I know Brenton and I have been having this conversation for like four years.
Has it been four years?
It's been a while, but the thing is, you, you keep saying that there was some other things that were going to be changed in the town, and you were going to kind of lump everything together, because it is costly to make the change to NMU, so it would be nice if we moved forward. Maybe it wasn't four years, but we've been talking about it for a while. So, you know, I don't know what is entailed to switch the properties to NMU, but it just makes sense to-
Was it four, yeah, and then can it?
Right.
Those four properties? In County, five total?
Yeah. Well, with Steve's, it would be five. So, anyway, so what? That's, that's Steve Hobson? Yeah. So those, and what other properties were you speaking of, Brent? There was other properties in the area?
Well, Steve's property is on Elizabeth Street, so off of Firehouse Lane there, as Elizabeth Street kind of turns into past, when it kind of jogs past Agway, you know, where their old business used to be. That, that right now is, I believe, R-10,000, right? And what we're looking at right now, and this is in my month's report this month right now, but the zoning review committee is currently looking at our highway business districts, which is on the east side, going up the other direction, and, yeah, going across, so that R-10,000, you see that pink between the general business and the highway business, so following our sewer map, those properties bordering East Market Street, we're considering integrating into general business, and then the highway business, changing that over to general business, and then expanding a little that. So the recommendation from the zoning review committee to the board of trustees would be to consider that, and then start the proceedings, because there's seeker and all kind of review process, but at least I think we're thinking to make a recommendation to the board of trustees to start the process.
So we, so the five properties we're speaking of would be included in that?
That's what our recommendation is, so.
Can we just pinpoint?
Do we need to go to all the meetings? Are they going to have public hearings?
We have to submit the letter first, and then the board of trustees will take whatever action necessary, and there's public hearings, and if you'll be notified, and I'll make sure you get notified.
Okay.
Do we have any idea of the time frame, like, I mean, not depending against the wall, but you're coming?
No, I, it's not, not going to be too, it'll be a couple of months at least, but-
It's unfortunately not fast. I'm just, I was looking at the map and listening too, but, so this would be the Chalka Factory right here, the LIB, so where's the Hobson property? Like, you're-
The first pink, right?
So you're definitely in the pink, all right.
Yes, and this, this lot I purchased, I don't know, about two years ago, right here, at the edge of the cemetery as well. I see that's-
Oh, is that?
It's NMU.
Okay.
So initially, I thought, well, maybe I would do something with that to supplement my other property, but it just didn't make sense logistically to move products we're moving and stuff, so.
And then Griff's, this is Firehouse Lane, Amherst, right here, yeah.
So it's on the south side of Amherst, and the four properties going north from Amherst to the NMU, so five-
This is, one of those has a daycare in it now. It's Kenny has the stand, I have the deli, so there's only one private house really, or two, I think. Two private and three businesses right now in that five section.
And you're, you're all beyond the sewer system.
Did you say beyond?
But we all have-
They will be on it, yeah. Yeah. Then across the street, you have the bank, and then Tom's Garage, and-
Tom's Garage. Yeah, across the street is all NMU.
And, and the way that NMU was formed, just so you know, that wasn't a matter of deliberation. It used to be the old, what they called the M District, which was industrial manufacturing. So when NMU was created, we basically took the boundary of the, the manufacturing zone and just changed it over to NMU with new regs, new uses, do everything, but the boundary did not change, so that's how that map was drawn. There was no deliberation on which properties to include or which properties not to include. So now we're into the point that we are going to get a sewer, and we're starting to look at expanding general business districts. So again, this, this is a process that the zoning review committee and the village of Red Hook is looking at, and will make recommendations to the board of trustees for, for their action if they so deemed it necessary, so.
Because like Brent said, we're, we tasked a subcommittee to give us comment and advice. There's a lot of technicalities and a lot of moving parts that have to interrelate, so to speak, so they're in the endgame of bringing this highway business and GB, general business project toward conclusion, I think probably in a month, but, but then there is, probably?
Probably not in a month.
Oh, yeah? We push them for updates, so it would be similar, we'd have to task them with this down here. There is a certain amount of logic, the colors seem like they could flow.
What is the shopping factor designated?
It's, it's called light industrial, commercial, so it's, it's a zone unto itself.
Sure.
And we use, when we did that, you know, like a shopping mall, that's the way they're usually done, so it's, it's a unique business manufacturing facility, and it seemed to fit the mold and not any other thing. The NMU zone is relatively new, within the last 15 years, so it doesn't need the same kind of work that the general business district does, which is written in the 70s. So the process, you know, I think it's a couple of months. It's a longer process, because we're essentially looking at everything within that zone and making it conform to more modern times, but the NMU, like I said, is more contemporary, and we're pretty happy with the way the language reads on that one, so it's just a matter of changing the map, and it's really not that simple as far as procedure, but-
Yeah, maybe Brent, you want to go into that a little bit? We're not trying to be slow, but there are-
No, it's just a process.
It's a zoning law change, so it is a public hearing, certain things have to be noticed and presented, and it's a timeline that gets set up. We can't just vote tonight or in a month on it, you know, certain things have to happen.
It is a protocol that's set by general municipal law, so we have to follow that, make it legal, and that's why the process, it's not a matter of making an excuse, it's just, it does take time.
So in your case, I'm keeping it active somehow, so you don't avoid any open texts right now, and then yours?
Question on that.
Why don't you give that fellow a mic there?
It's up here.
You'd say who you are, and we'll get you in the record.
My name's Dale Kerner. I'm the owner of Kerner Construction, so I'm actually looking at purchasing Steve's building on Elizabeth Street. Talking originally to Planning and Zoning, when I first approached them about buying the building, they said, oh, you're going to have to go through Planning and Zoning for approvals, this and that, because it was designated as residential. Then it was changed to, okay, you'd be able to occupy, conduct business out of there for what I wanted to do and everything else. My fear is, so if I purchase the building, under the assumption it's commercial, and in 20 years from now, nothing's changed, there's a different board sitting here, everything else, and I go to sell it, and they say, it's not commercial, it's residential, that building becomes half the value of what I purchased it for. And like Steve said, I know pretty well what it costs to change things and stuff like that, to where it doesn't make sense logically, kind of the way it is.
But usually, the way the zoning law written, is written, it's, it tries to eliminate discretionary thinking, so the law is set up so that regardless of who's, who's on the board or who's in office, the law states what it states, so there's protocol for a non-conforming use, and how long you can continue non-conforming use. Right now, it's almost indefinitely, as long as it's used for the same purpose. So, you know, it's not a matter of who sits on the board. They don't make the decision, it's based on the law, so it doesn't really matter who's either on the planning board, because the board of trustees wouldn't tell you that you couldn't use that, that would be the planning board, and we don't interfere with the planning board's deliberations.
Well, that was originally the, essentially, the acting inspector saying-
Yeah.
You need to go to the planning board-
Right.
For approval, which, if it's an indefinite thing, it didn't sound like it was.
It's not indefinite. There's, there's, there's strings attached to it, because it's considered now a non-conforming use, and there's a provision in our zoning code that you can continue a non-conforming use as long as you don't expand it or change the use of that. So that's something that you'll walk through with the planning board and also with the zoning enforcement officer on those. So the law is written, and that won't change, but the way they should describe the process to you and what's entailed, if you can in fact move your business into, in another type of business, you know, that's allowed. Well, I don't, I can't make that decision, that would be up to the planning board and zoning enforcement officer, but there is provisions in the law.
So the law right now states that the only thing that can come in my business is a deli.
And the only business that can go into his would be another window.
Similar, yeah.
Is it strict enough?
You both got variances, use variances on that.
Right, so in order for us to get a change of use, what would that involve?
It'd be, it'd be easier for us to change the zoning district, so-
Be easier for what you're doing now than for us to-
Yeah, for what you're doing, because right now, you know, we get things reviewed from Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, and they frown upon what they call spot zoning, so taking an individual property that's in, say, a residential district and making it commercial. So it's easier for us to change the zone, then it's no longer spot zoning, it is a permitted use in a commercial application, so, but that, again, that-
I just didn't know which way would maybe be quicker, okay?
Really no process, that's only, really the only way to go.
The good part is, Brent is very familiar, he used to chair the zoning board of appeals, he was George Peakeman's predecessor, right? So, you had 12 years in that role before, so, you know, we do look to him a lot for, when we try to change zoning, he's on that zoning review committee that we're referencing here.
And we also have Jay Trapp sitting on there, he used to be chair of the planning board, and Ray Tal, who's a member of the planning board currently, so you get some experienced people, and we're working. And right now, the recommendation hasn't formally been sent to the board of trustees, but if you stick around for the business, it is in my month's report as something we're considering to do relatively shortly, so.
I think for the purposes of tonight, I think it's good you brought it up, it seems like they're kind of pressing though in both cases, it's a little more timeline. I guess one question on the Kerner-Hobson thing, are you looking to put a construction company in there, or so be?
Well, basically, I'm looking more for our presence, our, you know, I'm looking for our just to park my trucks in, a small porch, our office in, you know, the retail space he used to sell his product, I would rent it out as retail space. You know, we, we basically currently have everything at the house, sold, so it's essentially, I'm looking for an office where I can go to work, keep my equipment there, you know, which is trucks and a couple trailers.
That, that might be an issue, but that'd be, that'd be up to the planning board. You have to look at the provisions. If we do change that to neighborhood mixed-use, you should look under, under the provisions of that, what's allowed and not allowed.
Well, I know so far in Red Hook, a construction company hasn't been allowed anywhere.
Well, actually, there's one in the Chalka Factory right now.
It's an office space.
Yes, it is, but it's a construction company.
But anyway, a couple thoughts. Have you talked on your own level with real estate lawyers and zoning lawyers at all on your side? They're, they're a little bit different. I don't pretend to know our zoning code in and out, and Brent knows a lot about it, but we're not the sole source of advice on it, you might want to research on your own, too.
Yeah, we, we can't interfere with the dealings of the planning or zoning board, so other than appointing the members, so any questions should really be addressed to them, and any specifics and what can and can't be done, that's a matter of the boards and the CEO to-
Sounds like you probably did talk to the building inspector, I seem to hear that throughout the discussion, but this board gets to review and change the zoning code, we don't enforce or work day-to-day with it. We don't direct that department how to interpret law, that's, that's what we're getting at. But it sounds like it's an issue, what we can do is talk amongst ourselves and see if the ZRC, or it could be a candidate for a bigger zoning, you know, instead of doing piece, 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 what do we do? But you folks have a shorter-term need than a bigger-picture zoning change would involve, what I mean, but that is something that encompasses more than one little, two parts, two parts of the village, you know? But if you don't have any other comment, I think it's good you brought it to our attention, and we can see what we can do, and then I would be inclined to task the ZRC, but I think we would need to think about that. What we do offer is we come, we have what we call Friday brainstorming sessions, and Brent and I tend to be there, and folks can roam in and roam out. Again, we can't bend or interpret our law, but if we had a better feel, then we could convey that to the zoning review committee somehow, and-
Well, actually, it's, it's being discussed within the zoning review, you know, not this property, not your former, or your, your older facility, but the, well, we talked about connecting the GBD to the highway business, and then the few properties into, into NMU, so that will come as a recommendation to the board of trustees from the ZRC shortly.
But like we said, when it comes out of that committee, then we would review it, and then we would set public hearings, and then other folks would get to comment if they're in favor or opposed, or, it doesn't tell us where we end up, but we'd have to take comment and circulate.
I mean, to change the map, basically what we're doing for the NMU zone is changing the map, because the zones are written. The general business is a different beast right now, because it will include two, two zones that aren't in there, so we're looking at all provisions within that district, but it, it doesn't affect any of you actually right now.
Where do you see where the MMU, the, what's liable?
In the MMU.
Oh, you would have to look, there's a whole list of principal permitted uses, accessory usage, and special permitted uses, so what we try to do is limit the footprint, if I can recall, the whole zoning law, is just basically get a smaller footprint. If you look at Knollwood Commons, that was built right after we did that, so footprint was 2,000 square feet, two floors. You could connect it with a hyphen, so we wanted a smaller masses to fit within a neighborhood.
Right, I understand that, but where would I go? Could I go online?
You can go online to Ecode.
If you go Ecode, Village of Red Hook.
Oh, and you could see-
It's a pretty good index, I just clicked NMU, and it tells you permitted uses buildings.
Okay.
It's pretty comprehensive, and if it's, I think there's a one at the list, you know, or similar, so we couldn't hit every use, but I think that's open enough that we could, the boards could interpret that. But basically, the NMU zone has to do with bulk, bulk regs and how buildings are positioned, and you have existing facilities right now, so.
Right, right.
I'd like to move on, when we start talking about bulk regs, you know, that's getting pretty detailed there. I think the big thing is, certain businesses and residents want us to look at something, and we are solution-driven, so we'll try to find it. I see the CBA chair is trying to say something.
You have to point out that use variance is very difficult to get, no matter how you cut it. Area variances, not really a big problem, even zoning is not a big problem, but an area, a use variance by state law is almost impossible.
Right.
Before anybody attempts to do a use variance, check with your attorney first. I'd recommend, again, to try, because it's very hard to reach that level, and I'd like to warn everybody up before we even start, because we don't have much discretion on that.
And there's a test that the zoning board review goes through, which, which is established by the state of New York, and we're not going to go into process now, but it's, it's very difficult to get a use variance.
But thank you, those that presented, and we have your names, and we know all of you, really, so we'll work on it and see what we can do. We'll move into the more mundane day-to-day operations, but thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I?
Thank you.
We're so happy.
What we have next, we did the minutes, so we'll talk the financial treasures report.
Ed Figaroa.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Cindy just reminded me, today we learned, and I'd like to follow a custom we do here, we did approve the minutes, but before we move off that, today we heard that Eduardo Figaroa passed away the past few days, a resident on Garden Street, and he's been there as long as I've been around, I think, and wasn't that old a guy? So it's a sad passing, and his link to us was, I know, whenever we had a Hispanic or Spanish-speaking court defendant, he would be who we retained to come in, and he was our interpreter. So he, his family came in and told Cindy that he passed away, so as is our custom for village residents that we know of or know, we leave a blank space in our minutes. Is there a second on a motion to do that? All in favor?
Aye.
So leave one page blank in memory of Eduardo Figaroa. Moving to the treasures report, we're at that point, June 10. Moving to the treasures report, we're at that point, June 10th, that means May 31st has happened, which is the end of the village's fiscal year. So the treasurer put two packets in, two info packets in your papers there. One is dated 31 May 19, that's the one that's reflecting year end status. And according to Cindy, I think a hard effort was made to get almost all the bills for fiscal year 19 in. It's, um, always a challenge because we do get some bills into June, which then have to be pushed back to that year, but, um-
The snow, snow removal materials?
I don't know, can you hear him when he speaks, it's hard for me to hear him up here? Okay, good.
I'll speak up.
He's very soft spoken, but his question was, are all the snow and related material bills from the town shared services billed over to us? The treasurer indicated yes, as I understand it. Because one year we got haunted by a little bit, some bills on that came in late and, uh, hadn't snowed in a while, so it was a pet peeve of Brent's, right? But, uh, looking at, I was going through it, and I'll read some numbers in a minute, but, um, I would assume there's some bills still to come in. But if you look at the general fund, which is our biggest, biggest operating line, looks like it came in at 99, on the expense side, 99.3% of budget, which means we have about $14,000 left there if some more bills come in, but, uh, either way, it's pretty close to what we were predicting and, um, it's pretty good, there's still some more revenue to come in, Cindy and I went through that today, we have, uh, revenues close, not as close as the expenses, but we still have some, uh, court revenue, meaning, um, that's the monthly payments the court gives to the controls office and to our operations. Town police revenue, school police revenue, um, we have mortgage tax came in and, um, that was post, I think this report you said, right, it was like another $9,000 or so, so that, that's good, it's. But anyway, the numbers for year end, for the record, our, um, account balances, this is, in the general fund, $310,957. Water fund, $120,800. Trust and agency, $17,991. Materials management has a negative $525. Petty cash, $51. Village Green, $4,149. Hardscrabble, $1,464. Health insurance, $396. Sewer fund, $10,120. And then as far as expenses, that's, that'd be in the packets that we're moving around, the voucher packets. General fund, $99,660. Water fund, $13,006. Trust and agency, $17,991. And materials management, $1,651. And again, that's the 31 May end of year numbers. The second report from Cindy is a transaction since June 1 through June 10. So the general fund balance is now 421,000, that's because people are paying their taxes, the tax bills went out. It's 421,510. Water fund is at 80,513, and I noticed some vouchers where we moved some, um, the USDA reserve money off and a few things like that in that packet there, so. Trusted agency, $18,896. Materials management bounced back to a big $157. Petty cash, same amount, $51. Village Green, looks like the same amount, $4,149. Hardscrabble, same amount, $1,464. Health insurance is up, it's replenished with new cash flow, it's at $10,369. Sewer fund remaining the same, $10,120. As far as expenses, and stay seated, one of them is pretty big, $195,239. I'll explain that in a minute. Water fund, $81,393. Trusted agency, $18,896, sewer zero. If you look at the vouchers, the big numbers in the general fund are based on, we've paid the first payment of the fire contract. And we, the workers comp for firemen and I think our disability coverage is in there too. And then, um, but those two are shared, we'll get some reimbursement back from the town and then, um-
Get some reserves, right?
Yeah, Cindy funded, the board has created multiple reserves for police vehicles, highway capital fund, uh-
Fire.
I had to know what the new money markets are.
Yeah, so, so these are loaded early, but once they're paid, they're 100% done for the year, so. But with those being read and discussed, I would move that we accept the treasury report for the fiscal year end dated 31 May 2019. And then the second report tonight dated 10 June 2019, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or thoughts? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. Moving along, police report, in front of me I have May 2019, and the fire company was going to stop in, but they're not here at the moment, they might come in later. But police report, we have incidents, 381. Breakout is 269 in the village, 105 in the town of Red Hook and seven in the village of Tivoli. Tickets issued were 121, there were 70 in the village. Uh, so, including, um, a separate total of nine parking tickets. And then in the town of Red, Red Hook, 51 tickets. Arrests were 24, 14 in the village of Red Hook and 10 in the town. And during the past 10 days or so, the PD sent around a news release where they did do another opioid, Narcan save up on East Curly Corners Road. And, um, it sounds like the training and the availability saved a person's life, they found somebody in very bad shape and, uh, with Narcan got the person back and off to a stabilization routine. We could, let's see, I guess I have to keep talking here since Mr. Trapp is not here. In your packets are also the planning and zoning department reports. I see 12 building permits issued, um, certificates of occupancy zero, certificates of compliance two. Municipal searches were 14, orders for remedy one, stop work orders two. No court appearances, 10 fire inspections were done, shows zero complaints and 10 inspections, that's, um, I assume that's in the fire inspection world, that second word inspection is there. No, I guess not 10 and 10, I'm not sure what the second inspection is about there. Pl- planning board actions, yeah. Planning board actions, there's a plot approval, extension granted to a proper, granted to a property located at Morgan's Way, listed under a tax parcel by a resolution that was passed. ZBA, there's preliminary discussion for an area variance, area variance application for property on South Broadway. And then the financial report sheet from that department lists the identities of those transactions I announced. And the gross income for that month was $3,034.50. And I know we are seeing houses selling, one of those councilor people, municipal searches are folks either refinancing or selling their houses and there's one house on Church, no, Philip Street, that seemed like it sold in two weeks and it really seemed to be turning over quickly. And, um, it's a good thing. That would be the planning and zoning report. Maybe my voice, Ms. Norris, you want to talk about your world?
Sure, it's short and sweet though, oh, here comes the fire department.
Yeah, okay. Why don't you go?
I am very short and sweet. Okay, uh, for the month of May, we sold $1,704 in tags and paid out $869.61. We had 8.06 tons of garbage and 3.17 tons of recycling. Reminder, we now have to sort recycling, co-mingled is collected every other week, alternating with paper and separated cardboard and those two must stay separated. This is the last month of our spring cleaning sale, buy 10 tags, get one free, uh, only at the village hall, red or blue. This was just kind of slow month, but we're gearing up for hardscrabble day, it's Saturday, September 21st. Hopefully, uh, we'll have a band announcement next month. We have some other fun events going on, one, um, the VFW I think is working on something, I don't have the details for that yet. Uh, and the fire department's 100th anniversary, uh, August 16th and 17th?
Yes.
Coming up, and that's all I have, it was a short and sweet week, month rather, sorry.
Well, I could enhance it a little bit because, um, on the fire company, it's a, it's a big deal, it's Tivoli and Red Hook. And, um, we've been meeting about once every three weeks and putting together, it's going to be a real fun August party. And, um, big, big parade, we're working with DOT, trying to get detours and permits and different things all lined up. And, uh, there's going to be live music and games and food and good things for a month before hardscrabble and a, what, a week, a day or two before the county fair. So it's going to be end of summer fun. And when I was doing the police report, we mentioned we were expecting the fire company tonight and they did arrive. The chair of the board was actually coming in. We're working at, with year end, the new fiscal year, getting the final contract signatures, so I think that might be what he's coming to talk about. And then, um, I don't know if he has the monthly report, we don't read the numbers or anything tonight, but, um, if, uh, what we could do is Rob and I could go into the back for a minute and just talk, and Brent, you want to do your, your report? And I'll just go in the back and see if there's anything we have to talk about.
So I'll start with the Village Green Committee's monthly report, um, current balances and final balance of fiscal year 2018 and 19. Of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts are as follows, community beautification. We are the negative $601.46, shade tree contractual, negative $6.30. Pretty close, pretty close. And the Village Green Committee checking account is $4,149.92. There were no Village Green Committee's meetings held during the month of May. And residents or businesses interested in having a tree planted on their adjacent street right away, please contact the village clerk or myself or Dave Pearson. He chairs the Village Green Committee. I'll go to the highway monthly report, the highway department is currently picking up brush and lawn debris on every first and third Monday of the month. And this depends on the weather and their workload, so they get around to it, um, soon thereafter. And residents are reminded to place lawn debris in curbside and not in the road. And please limit the size of brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet, with tree branches no larger than six inches in diameter. We have noticed some pretty large brush piles, so keep them smaller, this is to facilitate us, this handles our equipment better. Brush that includes tree trunks, stumps, grass clippings, garbage or building materials will not be picked up. The highway department will be repaving portions of Kent Road and Cambridge Drive after June 1st, which is soon thereafter. We had to wait till our fiscal year kicked in. The approximately $70,000 project cost will be deducted from the fiscal year 2019, 20, maintenance of streets account and the CHIPS general fund budget lines. Four excavating and paving contractors have been contacted to submit bids to repay the Red Hook Village municipal parking lot. A dormitory authority of the state of New York grant will be used to pay for the cost of this project. And this project is expected to be complete before September of 2019. We've been reviewing all this stuff, contractors and costs associated with the project. An estimate to repair two catch basins on East Market Street and three catch basins on West Market Street has been submitted from Frank Vosberg and Sons on May 13th. The estimated cost of $11,500 plus additional cost to provide an additional frame and grate furnished by the village of Red Hook will be deducted again from the maintenance of streets, general fund budget line. And this project is expected to be complete before the fall of 2019. So these are catch basins in the state highway, but we're responsible to maintain from the face of curb back, even though it's part of DOT's right of way. And no revenue was generated from the sale of scrap metal during the month of May. The total revenue generated for last fiscal year 2018, 19 is $2,707.30, which exceeded our $1,000 anticipated income. And since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $28,707.47 has been generated. And again, proceeds for this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the village highway materials management and water departments. And anybody, residents or businesses interested in donating scrap metal can contact the village highway department at 758-8600 or the village clerk's office and highway department personnel will assist in picking up scrap metal upon request. The intermunicipal task force and Red Hook infrastructure monthly report, and I'll start with the Red Hook sewer project. Meetings were held on May 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th and 31st in the Red Hook Village Building. And we reviewed the amendments to the sewer use law. The public hearing notice was submitted to the official village newspaper back in April. A public hearing was held on May 13th and a resolution to adopt modifications of the sewer use law was approved by the village of Red Hook Board of Trustees on May 13th. And CT Mail forwarded responses to the Dutchess County Department of Health, um, based on their comments of April 19th. And also sent in revised construction documents on May 13th. We reviewed change order number three submitted by CT Mail on 5/13 for additional fees incurred to provide easement revisions and responses to Dutchess County DOH. Uh, meeting was held with the county of Dutchess Department of Behavioral and Community Health, which is the DOH, on May 31st in the Red Hook Village Building. We had four members of the Department of Health, including the commissioner. We're trying to work out some of their concerns and some of our resolutions and what's we've been doing for over a year. So we're hoping, we're hoping that's going to come to a conclusion sho- shortly. And the water loop, the project on, this is on Route 9 and Old Farm Road. Meetings were held on May 3rd, 10th, 17th and 28th in the village of Red Hook with some of the property owners that will be paying for this project, along with Delaware Engineering and Ed and myself. And we've, we've reviewed the status of revised plans, um, and the, and the New York State DOH and New York State DOT permit applications. We also discussed with Kirchhoff, which is building that traditions at Red Hook off Old Farm Road. A revised application for approval of plans for public water supply improvement was submitted to the village of Red Hook for review, signatures and submission. On May 30th, a seeker public hearing and determination was made by the Red Hook Village Board on this project on May 13th. And the, the water main loop project will connect dead end water mains to provide more efficient, safer and easily repaired water distribution services to properties along Old Farm Road and South Broadway, north of MNT Bank. The costs associated with the project will be paid for by private property owners benefiting from village municipal water connections. The costs for permitting and construction oversight will be provided by the village of Red Hook. The Red Hook Village Water Project Phase 2, the Red Hook Village Red Hook Town Water Distribution System Interconnect was tested on May 18th. Valves from the town's water system to the village's water systems were open. A drop in pressure occurred and the valves were closed, some may have noticed it was on a Saturday around 10 o'clock. Didn't last long, but this test was conducted to verify that a backup water supply would be available when the village's elevated water storage tank is decommissioned. And an emergen- and an, and an emergency event occurred at the village's well field and pump controls. The village will decommission the Tower Street Elevated Tank on June 4th, and this happened for 24 hour period. Delaware Engineering and VRI, who's the village water operator, supervised, coordinated and verified that all pump controls worked properly and in accordance with the design intent. We're trying to get them to do a longer test, perhaps a permanent decommissioning of the elevated tank. The Red Hook Community Solar Installation, I neglected to count how many times I have mentioned this project in our monthly reports over the years, I guess it would be. But I'm mentioning this one at this time. The village board of trustees conduct, conducted a public hearing on May 16th in the Red Hook Village Building. Approximately 35 people attended and were given an opportunity to express their concerns. The public hearing remained open until June 6th, which is now closed. Lead agency will be confirmed and the seeker fullest environmental assessment form will, will be reviewed and completed. A determination will be made and the Monroe balancing test will be conducted by the village of Red Hook Board of Trustees and that's scheduled for June 17th. At 7 o'clock, right here in the village building. The project located at the village of Red Hook, Firehouse Lane Well Field Site in the town of Red Hook will contain approximately nine acres of- Town of Red Hook will contain approximately nine acres of photovoltaic solar panels and provide electrical energy at a reduced rate for the Town of Red Hook, Village of Red Hook, and the Village of Tivoli municipally owned buildings and facilities. It would also provide electrical energy at reduced rates for residents who choose to register with the program. The intermunicipal task force, both Charlie Lang and myself represent the village. The task force met on May third, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first in the Red Hook Town Hall, and we are discussing Red Hook Town Law Chapter one twelve, which are short-term rentals, one-time exception registrations, and annual operating permits with the Town of Red Hook Planner, Michelle Gregg. Discussions continued regarding short-term rentals in certain Red Hook Town zoning districts, including number of rooms that can be rented and hosted and non-hosted primary dwelling units and possible regulations that may be enacted with respect to the short-term rentals in the Town of Red Hook. The goal of the intermunicipal task force is to propose the adoption by the Red Hook Town Board of a balanced and reasonable regulation governing short-term rentals and allowing citizens to share the economic benefit of their property while protecting and preserving neighborhood character and long-term housing availability. One more. There were no meetings of the Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee or the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of May thirty-first is one million four hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. The Salt Kill Watershed Community Monthly Report, a meeting was held on May fifteenth at the Elmendorf Inn. Dan Miller from the New York State DEC presented a brief history of habitat change in the Hudson River Estuary. Research presentations by Bard College students on the impact of road salt on constructed wetlands. Update status report on the Salt Kill Watershed Communities Buffer Mapping Project. And there was a report on river keeper, river keepers on taro bacteria in source water project. The Northern Dutchess Alliance, which I'm a member of, the executive committee met on May third in the Red Hook Village Building. We're looking at possible methods to integrate the Northern Dutchess Alliance's Blueprint for Economic Development into local zoning regulations. Particular areas of interest include provisions affecting retail, service, and manufacturing uses. The Northern Dutchess Alliance Executive Committee will be communicating with the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development to further develop a survey and inventory of short-term rental and long-term rentals in Dutchess County. The Town of Red Hook Local Water Revitalization Program Working Group, which I'm a member of, representing the Village of Red Hook, met on May seventh. We reviewed revisions to the Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, updated and edited original versions to include amendments and revisions. We also discussed updates to existing maps and the addition of new maps to illustrate current amendments and revisions to the Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. And finally, the Village of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee um, met on May third, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first in the Red Hook Village Building, and the following items were discussed. We're looking at a proposal to expand the General Business District to include nineteen properties of the R ten thousand district. This is on East Market Street, an existing highway business district. Reviewed and proposed amendments to the permitted principal uses and special permitted uses on the existing general business district and reviewed possible uses to be included in the amended general business district from the existing highway business and neighborhood mixed-use district. We also reviewed use charts of neighboring municipalities for reference and the possible inclusion into the amended Village General Business District. And we discussed, as I mentioned earlier, drafting a letter to the Village of Red Hook Board of Trustees to recommend incorporating portions of the R ten thousand along East Market Street in highway business districts. While the Red Hook Village Zoning Review Committee continues its amendment process, recommendation to expand the Neighborhood Mixed Use District to include five properties, I have four, if we can make that change, along am, properties from Amherst Road north to the current boundary of the Neighborhood Mixed Use District along South Broadway. So that's forthcoming. We'll get that out shortly, and I'm done.
So you were presaging the group that came in today, then?
I was, and it was mentioned in my report, so.
Thank you.
And that was the consensus of, of the committee.
Yeah, well, but while we have Mr. Frye here, we thought we'd give him some time to speak. But what we're doing with the change over the fiscal year and negotiations, we did conclude the fire contract, which is good news, and it's got some new add-ins. We increased the rate by the tax cap, and then we also threw in something to help them with capital planning too, which is not a ton of money, but it's what we can afford and we threw that in there. And we're, with the hundredth anniversary, we're separate from the contract. The village will help towards some of the cost of that, and we're helping with logistics as well. And we're gonna continue looking forward to their services and hoping to get them more volunteers somehow. We don't know exactly what the magic formula is for that. A lot of committed people over there, but I think we all need more of them. And then on top of that, I thought he brought in the monthly report and anything you wanna say, Rob? But somewhere, George, where's our transportable microphone? Is that uh, Robbie, just so you know, just so everybody can hear you on the TV side, but you can, but this is Rob Frye, Chair of the Red Hook Fire Company.
So I just have our monthly report of twenty-seven fire calls and fifty-eight EMS calls last month, so um, you know.
Is that up to like high eighties again? It seems like it's always about?
Yeah, eighties, nineties, you know, it's, we're, we're pretty busy, unfortunately, you know, but uh, you know, we, we do what we can. And like you said, we're always looking for volunteers. So anybody interested, we just started a Facebook campaign, so hopefully we get some people from that.
Yeah, and the parade and the uh, party part of it. The hundredth anniversary was a huge deal, like I said earlier, and uh, it's very formal too, from what I understand. Like the parade is not just your normal hardscrabble fun parade. It's got a protocol and the whole design, and they showcase their uniforms, their marching style, and their gear, right, their equipment?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, we have Westchester County judges coming up for the parade, and they look inside the cabinets of the fire equipment as it's driving down the road. They check underneath the wheel wells to see if they're clean. You know, they, they do quite a bit, you know, and certain guys look at equipment, other guys look at, you know, the people marching. You know, you've got people looking at the, the bands that are playing, you know, and then we've got a, a list of various trophies that we have to provide. From what I've heard through the grapevine, it's, it's looking like it's gonna be the biggest county convention in like ten years, so we've got, I think, close to thirty departments coming in from all around.
Good, yeah, be good. So you get the numbers there, and then um, the contract, we each signed it, and um, we'll shoot some copies off for both our files and everything tomorrow, multiple copies, whatever, so.
That'd be great.
Thank you for your help and.
Okay, thank you.
See you in the next meeting. And in the regular portion of the meeting, we put Rob in there, but um, we do have a water report from our operator, and I had a chance to look at it when it came in. It looks like our curve is back up to where we're averaging two hundred and thirty-three thousand gallons a day of pushing out of the wellheads and the storage tanks. That works out to be seven million two hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred gallons moved through our system last month. And like Charlie reports, each month, we do test that at certain spots off-site, meaning within the system, but not right at our wellfields, essentially for coliform count. And the good news is none is detected, so they all, three testers come back as absent. They report the sodium hypochlorate usage, which is essentially the chlorination product, product, using two point seven seven gallons a day. And like Brent said in his report, our whole intent is to get this elevated storage tank off our grid. Pumps and controls and computer programs have been in place, and we've been pushing our consultants to do it. They did that live test June fourth, and things worked well. Really, it's just a matter of checking some software results and switching it over, but when they did all their tests, they notified the fire company, and now we have our new website, which we can modify ourselves. So if anything's coming up, we can put that out there a lot more easily than we ever used to be able to. And um, we have been waiting on the operator to, to work on some meter issues still. Looks like there's fourteen on the list, and I had more talks with him today that they're aware of them and working on them and getting through them. So keep them, keep pushing on that. But the rest of it essentially talks about the, the work they did on the elevated tank Overall, looks good to me. We don't know why, why in May, that number bounced to the higher side of average for some reason, but.
I just wondered if that had to do with when they tested the air.
Testing maybe, yeah.
Just pumped up the, ramped up the pumps to get it back up.
Could be. That would move us off the committee reports. Thanks, folks. We could move to regular business, and the one essentially we've dealt with already, we had fire company, fire protection, contract signing. We were expecting them to come in and do that today, and uh, don't know how formally we'd get with it, but we covered that, it is signed, and we're good. There's a two-year contract, and it's in line with the talks and plans we made and negotiations with them. We have, last month, we talked about the block grant idea for Cherry Street Sidewalk at the Elmendorf Inn. They had a wonderful celebration this past weekend with um, their new look, meaning the turf on the parking lot and the removed brush barrier between theirs, themselves and the second building. I, I thought it looked awesome. It looks, it really does feel now like more of an architectural spot, not just an old building.
And a nice public space in the back that.
Yes, they really utilized it nicely that day, and I think that's their plan, to just keep that green common feel going, and it was really great. So I think if we could try, like we said, last month, we have until October, but each of us kind of looking there to see what we can do. There is a tree sort of in the way, and George had some comments last month on the width of Cherry and the action on the steward's side of the corner, but.
And I talked to some people on Saturday about, you know, locating that sidewalk, you know, either with a planting strip separating the street and the sidewalk, so for snow storage or um, material is an issue. And again, that tree is.
Hmm.
A big tree right there.
Oh, yeah.
Right in the way.
Yeah.
And the rock can be moved.
The rock.
There's a big boulder there too.
Yeah. But anyways, that's just something to keep thinking about, and it sounds like that's what we're doing, so. Solar array update slash details, like we reported in the minutes review, on May sixteen and June sixth, we had special public hearings here with regard to that shared services project we were doing with the Town of Red Hook and Tivoli and us to get a locally sourced green solar generation array. It's called locally generated distributed energy. It's promoted by New York State and federal tax incentives, and it's a good project we've been very interested in, and we're working through, like Brent said, seeker and Monroe process. The next meeting, like Brent said, is coming up on that. And nobody's really hearing any questions, so we don't have much on that. Brent also touched on the water loop in his report. I don't really have, we're working, trying to get the contracts finished up, and I know our engineers did get um, a revised DOH permit application to, to get that through DOH's offices, and then the village will be taken out a perm, DOT permit to get a, a drill done under the road. But like Brent said, our goal is, we have very little expense here. We're just trying to get a circuit down there for our water and um, limited cost to us with developers, there are three of them, Hoffman, Ross, and Bay Rider essentially funding the bulk of the project, still pending, and hopefully DOH gets that, like I said, Delaware picked up a revised plan and a revised application about three or four days ago, so that's moving One thing I had here was IT changeover. We have in our building servers and backup capability to the cloud and desktops and various car-mounted computers and some tablets and different things that work off our in-house IT system. It's been worked on and well-maintained by a, an individual who had worked with us in our police department way back. You'll see his bills in our bill, in our vouchers, Rick Heinlein. But he did tell us he is moving to the West Coast, and we need an IT changeover. He recommended and comes through a company called CMI, and I have some info here I'll review with you. One thing we look for, it's a certain confidentiality to what we do, meaning there's, the courts are on their own separate New York State court system, we don't run those computers. But in the PD, especially their, their files and processes and things, that we, we need somebody that the PD can trust and we can trust. And the CMI does a lot of work for other companies, other, other municipalities rather across the river in Ulster County world, and uh, our current IT guy Heinlein knows them personally and recommends them. They came in, helped us with one problem, and regained an overview of what we do and need here. Essentially, we don't have anybody in shop every day, but we have the need for somebody on call every day if something goes south. They do come, like I said, recommended, and they are local in a sense that they're based in Kingston, and one of the principals is up in Germantown, so they are close to their, if, if needed. The paperwork they gave me, and I thought we'd talk about it for a moment, is um, it would be a consulting type agreement, and the one that looks to make the most sense is, if I can find the right page here, you can buy, it's ten hours of block time, and then you keep buying more time. The difference is essentially, we would pay Heinlein as he did work by the hour, whereas these folks, you buy ten hours, and as they do work, they debit.
Just like a retainer, basically.
Yeah, and then, but you can keep buying ten-hour blocks. And it seemed to be the best way. They, they have other methods, like annual contracts, but I think for us, we could work our way into it by, by this method. But I do think we need to do something because today's July, uh, June tenth, rather, and Rick is essentially flying out next, you know, in three weeks or whatever. So um, and like I said, they, they did do a walkthrough, they know they can handle our system, they've, they haven't been inside it to work on or anything, but they, they don't see anything that's outside their skill set or something they can't deal with. So I'm inclined to, as of July one, switch over to them by buying a ten-hour block, and we would um, work with them and just see how it goes. There are agreements, and what we have to look at, as always, is our procurement policy, but there are professional services in my mind, specialty services. Years ago, we did try looking for um, outside IT firms, and I think we're still loath to hand it all over entirely to somebody outside. This is more, we do our day-to-day stuff and things we can't deal with, they come in and help us with. The big thing, like, we know we have to always back up, and they would continue doing that for us. That's, we have the hardware and different software in place for that. Just looking here, here are other options they have is flex time, limited yearly contract. But they do give us what they call overnight support. They just charge a little more if, if somehow we detected something going bad at two AM, they would get active, but it's big time and a half at night.
So if I had a problem, as I do now, if I email them, is there gonna be a minimum charge for that?
They, yeah, they have um, hours, let's see, onsite visit during normal business hours, and they have remote support during normal business hours. Looks like a half hour for remote support. After hours, one and a half times the current rate. Emergency. Emergency service, if you want it within a one-hour response time, if they like, get over here.
Every time.
It's like a one-point-five times the current rate.
It's all an emergency.
And holidays, which we tend to be off holidays, that's two times the rate, but.
That doesn't sound bad.
No, I don't think so. You can buy ten-hour blocks or twenty-hour blocks, but we know what we spend for Heinlein.
Does that also include what they do that will use up the time? Because I know Rick Heinlein would do things on a monthly basis, he would upgrade, check on, revise, things we never asked him to do.
Yeah, I think, yes, anything they're spending their time on would be. This is, let's see, to get your coverage started, let's see, they do guaranteed support and emergency service, access to a knowledgeable technician for any number of questions, opinions, support, that does not qualify as a billable call, let's see, they say fifteen minutes or less that does not require remote access, so it looks like they can take you down to fifteen minutes minimum bill. They do management of your account, including scheduling, ordering, research for hardware, software, networking needs, remote access support, setup and fees, so really they're full service, whatever. To me, they're just going to replace him. What I like about it is, he knows them, and they know him, and they've already met with the police, and they know what we're looking for, and they know what we need. And I think, you know, ten hour, we've all seen Rick's bills in the voucher reviews, and they're usually two and a half, three hours a month, something like that, and it's not, so this might get us through a few months, and then we'll just have to keep renewing the block.
Good way to test drive them, too.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Long-term contract.
Right. And that'd be something, what I have in front of me is, we could talk about it more, it'd sound good to you, yeah.
Is there a discount, like if you bought twenty hours, or it's?
Yeah, let's see.
I mean, I agree that we should start off with ten, but I'm just saying, you know.
Yeah, let me see, a page, it's a good question, and it was a page somewhere with, ten hours is nine-hundred-ninety-nine dollars, twenty hours is eighteen-hundred-nine, or, let's see, eighteen hundred dollars, so it's a twenty, yeah, twenty dollars, yeah, yeah.
Start at ten, so you got both.
Yeah.
Good to have the option going forward if you're.
So I think I would put together a quick motion here, clerk, if you're ready, so. Do you have something down? Okay. But again, just to recap and view the fact that our current IT consultant is moving out of state and could no longer serve us, we do need a replacement, and we've been referred to CMI Technology Support. They go by CMI Tech is when, what they say when you call them. I would move that we try them on a short-term, we call it ten-hour block basis. We do have to sign a contract with them that confirms they have insurance, different things like that that we would certainly want, but I think since we have twenty-one days in between now and when our guy goes away, I'd like to line them up with signing the contract to purchase the ten-hour block methodology and one ten-hour block at this point. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other thoughts, discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Let's see, court audit options. What I thought I'd like to do is, we've received a letter from, yeah, a couple sources, thanks. One from the State of New York Unified Court System, dated June four, says, "Section twenty-nineteen A of the Uniform Justice Court Act requires that town and village justices annually provide their court records and dockets to their respective town and village auditing boards, and that such records then be examined and that the fact be entered into the minutes of the board's proceedings." And they say, "Further, the Unified Court System's internal audit office is responsible for monitoring town and village board compliance. I am requesting that you provide a copy of the audit of your local court's records for the fiscal year ending in twenty nineteen, and your, and a copy of your board resolution acknowledging that the required examination was conducted." And tells you where to send it, so twenty nineteen fiscal year just ended ten days ago, and so we need to do it. Historically, we've used CPA separate and distinct from our regular audits, Lori E. Doty CPA, and essentially, they look at the financial transaction size of the court. I'm inclined to switch over to use Pat Zinkowski, who does our big audits, just to look at more than just the financial transactions, and we did ask them to bid a quote in, again, it's professional services, it's essentially accounting auditing CPA-type firm, and they're in the fifteen-hundred to two-thousand-dollar range, it's a little more than we spend right now, but I think it might be worth working on that, just to get, well, it's probably it's good just to get another set of eyes, a new auditor or something on things, and just so the audience knows, the village board, we get to see our financial transactions, but the court is separate and distinct from us, we don't have direct access, direct authority into court files and court sentencing and court financial transactions. They are strictly governed, but, but we do have the duty to audit it, and it might be behooves to switch it over.
What's the price difference?
It's, I would say between a thousand and fifteen-hundred bucks, it's significant, but I think, you know, our auditor didn't give a firm hard number, it's essentially hours required, but.
It said that in that letter, that they, they would be reviewing, or we would be reviewing the court dockets?
The Unified Court, let's see, is responsible, Unified Court System's internal audit office is responsible for monitoring, and then, so it sounds like they, whatever word monitoring means, they, we send them something, they don't do the audit. And he says, "I request you provide a copy of the audit," and then with a board resolution acknowledging that the required examination was conducted.
They list a bunch of stuff that we could look at, or?
Yeah, they say provide their court records and dockets, so.
So is that something we look at, or something that the auditors will look at?
I would say the auditors, because I wouldn't know what to look at, to be honest with you, and.
Could we look at them if we so choose?
Let's see, we, we have received the docket, remember last year we got that? But court records, I think that goes from when fines come in to when they get deposited, there's a lot of financial detail that the auditors would know, the section twenty-nine, twenty-nineteen A of the.
So that's a formalized, that's a formalized process, that someone would have.
Yeah, that's what I viewed as, yeah.
Skill set is more capable and better suited to do.
Yeah, I don't see any one of us really knowing how to do it or what to do, and you're busy enough, right, you need to do it, yeah. Anyway, so I would say that, since I did reach out to Pat Zinkowski, and they, they usually do our fiscal year, end-of-year audit with helping prep up our AUD, if the board concurs, I'd like to ask them to line up to do this, too. So I put a motion that the board trustees reach out and retain the CPA firm, Pass and Koski, Buchi, and Howe, to do the twenty-nineteen court audit. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other thoughts, discussion? All favor? Looks like that hits the things I had on my list, I would like to go to executive session, but what we could do, we let George comment at once with the other public, what, any other public comment out there?
Okay. There we go. I would like to compliment them on the patching of the road in the village, I don't know how long it's going to last, but it's really nice.
Where did you see that, over on your?
Cherry Street, especially on the top on the hill, because it's, it's, it falls apart, last year they patched it and it came apart again, so if cars coming down, have to swing out to the center of the road with bicycles, and because they can whip it around there at thirty, forty miles an hour.
Wow.
Surprise wasn't head-on yet, but that helps because they can stay to their side of the road and not be hitting the rut. The other question I had was, is the fleet officially down to three police cars now?
Short term, yes. The question is, is the fleet down, the police car fleet down to three? As you know, one had a wreck.
Yes.
And it was total loss.
Like four months ago, five months ago?
Yeah, and we have negotiated and concluded with our insurance company, and the sergeant assures me we've ordered the new one.
Okay.
But for some reason, I don't understand manufacturing situations right now, but things, specialty things seem like they take forever to get. Remember when we were getting the big plow truck, it's like, you just don't go buying a police car? It's not that different from a regular car, but whatever the internal engine mixed with the, you know, transmission, but our goal is to get one, the fourth one, because we've kind of stretched a little bit with.
I was just wondering, because it's apparently, if three's working, you know.
Yeah, they.
Keep it to three.
Barely, I think it's a, they're kind of like, where are you going, where can I go? They kind of have to shuttle, shuffle a little bit, but, but like, you know, we do have that insurance coverage where if a car is less than a certain number of years old, in the way our coverage works, we get, if it's a total loss, we get the full retail value, not a depreciated value, and they also cover switching over light bars and.
Yeah, I think the problem may be the type of vehicle, because it seems like they're all going to SUVs now, and they were, that was a Taurus, I believe, and they may not be making them, or.
No, you're right, they're, they call it, essentially it's a Taurus, but it's, they call it the Interceptor, it's like the police.
Police package or whatever.
But now we're actually forced, because I think they're not making the Interceptor, they're making, now we're going to a Dodge, Dodge, the Charger, whichever, the, the police version of a Charger.
Was getting out of the car, car business, as is Dodge, too.
Because that held the spec, you're right, because I was like, I, I just wanted to get the same car, but I couldn't, but that's the story on that one.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, good. What we could do, anything else from the board, thoughts? I think I put a check mark next to everything here. Yeah, what we could do, like I said, I would like to go to executive session, let me get a few things I need for that. This, this, so it looks like it's eight-twenty. I would move that we go to executive session for two matters, actually, one pertaining to employment of a particular individual, and secondly, for contract-related discussions. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor? We'll be back, so. So we left for executive session, and now it is eight-thirty-nine-ish. I would move that we come out of executive and back to regular, is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, we hit what we needed to in there. I hit all the items on my agenda, we have a bunch of bills to pay, I think they moved up and down for those here to sign, so I would move that we pay bills after audit, is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And then, unless anybody else needs anything just from the board, Brent? Jen, you all right? Mr. Kovalcheck, would you like to do your?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'd be in favor of that, I'll second it, all favor? Aye, good night, everybody.